Thank you. So as Cindy said, we're fortunate this morning, especially with tax season upon us, to have both Commissioner Mark Bowden and Deputy Commissioner John Biella from the Department of Revenue Services join us. Mark was nominated for his second term as Commissioner for the Department of Revenue Services by Governor Lamont back in February 2023. He was also appointed as the leader of the department. Sorry, also as the leader of the department, he has implemented multi-year modernization initiative, which is something I think we all appreciate greatly, and that supports the environment of data, data-driven tax collection, offering enhanced online tax filings and payment options, and promoting voluntary taxpayer compliance. So that's been great. In addition to DRS, Governor Ned Lamont named Commissioner Bowden as a senior advisor for infrastructure, an extremely important role. Prior to accepting the position as DRS Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Bowden was the mayor of Danbury. Actually, I think the longest-serving mayor in history for Danbury, as well as serving in the Connecticut House of Representatives where I first met him and had the pleasure of working with him. So greatly appreciate Mark joining us with all of his knowledge and the initiatives he's taken on for the state of Connecticut and the city of Danbury. In addition to that, we said that we've got Deputy Commissioner Biella with us, and John serves as the Deputy Commissioner of the department, and he began his career at DRS back in 1992, starting first as an entry-level position and then advancing through various roles over the years. From 92 to 2018, Biella worked in the Audit and Compliance Division, managing compliance programs for personal income tax, corporate business tax, and flow-through entities, trusts and estates. He's done just about every type of entity there is out there. And in 2008, he became the Tax Division Chief, overseeing a team of over 100 employees and participating in several department committees, including the Tax Policy Group and the Interdivisional Tax Team. I think something that we've all experienced and seen ourselves is that throughout his tenure, John has demonstrated a commitment to public service and effective tax administration, contributing significantly to Connecticut's tax revenue systems, but more importantly, he's the person that we call when we have questions. John is always great about picking up the phone to respond to us, getting back to us via email, participating in these meetings, the DRS dinners, et cetera. So thank you very much, John and Mark, Commissioner and Deputy Commissioner, for joining us this morning. Our game plan today is for both the Commissioner and Deputy Commissioners share information with you. And as they're going along, should you have any questions, please put them in the chat, and we'll make sure those questions get asked. And then if there is any time left at the end, we'll open it up to Q and A. So thank you very much again for joining us, and Commissioner Bowden, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Bonnie. Can everybody hear me okay? Good. Okay. Well, thanks. It's always an honor to be meeting with you all. And so what John and I did is we're gonna break down, and I'm gonna sort of talk at the 50,000-foot level. John is gonna break down a little bit some of the more finite changes that are going on in the filing season this year. As Bonnie mentioned, there are two things in my portfolio. One is to manage and operate and work with the DRS team, and the second thing is to service the governor's senior advisor on infrastructure. First of all, before I begin, some thoughts. We know that we screwed up on a pension form that's out there, so don't put that in the chat box. I think we already put up the replacement form for it already. I think we made a mistake there in some language, and that happens because we design all of our forms in-house. So our apologies, but I think we got it right now at this point. One of the things that you'll find interesting is we really have had worked hard at transparency related to our tax code. We put out a number of reports. The Tax Into the Study is one that you all may be familiar with. It's been well-received. When both sides argue over it, then you know it probably says the right stuff. We just are getting ready to start in our third iteration of that report. And before I got here, we did one in 2014, and then we didn't do another one until I came on board in 2020. So we have made a commitment to doing those every two years so that policymakers, the governor, the legislature can understand where we are in terms of taxes and how they impact our residents and where they impact. It's always a work in progress, it's always evolving, because as we get more and more data to incorporate, we're able to be able to build a better study. So our first one wasn't rough, but it wasn't as expansive as some people wanted. Last year was even more expansive, and the following year it'll be even more as we continue to carve in more and more data. It's hard. Remember, there's some stuff that we don't have. We don't have property tax data. We're not the repository for that data, yet that probably has the biggest income, has the biggest impact on our tax structure here in Connecticut. So look for that stuff. Just yesterday, we released another study. It's our tax, the Connecticut Tax Gap Study, and that you can find online probably today. But basically, it breaks down for you all the taxes that are unpaid. And this year, in this study, we used the year 2022. It shows that, and that's probably average, by the way. It's a typical year for us, post-COVID year. Although it was for the, it's coming out of COVID, I guess is a better way to say that. Anyways, it shows that there's about $3.7 billion that's left on the table each year. Remember, that's just for 2022, but you gotta pretty much guess that's very similar for the years as well. Once we begin our collection efforts, our auditing and things like that, that number drops to about $3 billion. So we collect about 700, in a given year, $700 million through auditing and enforcement actions and things like that. It's still a significant amount of money, and I think when people see it, they're gonna freak out. And while we want everybody to pay their liability and their fair share, the reality is, is that our tax gap is very similar to other states and other countries internationally. People, as you know, take advantage of the underground economy. Think about those folks that you know, that maybe you're a barber or landscaper. Maybe they own a restaurant. They don't report all their income, and they don't report all of their cash transactions, and that's a lot of where that's captured, right? So it's an interesting study. I encourage you to read it. I wouldn't freak out about it. We do need more staff. That's one of our recommendations in there. We're down about 20% on staffing from our peak, and we need more auditors. Each auditor brings in, John will tell you, about a million and a half, 2 million a year, once they're fully trained and up and running. So that's a net positive and a cash flow situation. And if we're gonna make a dent in this tax gap, we're gonna have to have frankly more auditors to be able to do that. We've asked for them, and we pretty much get rejected every year for more staffing. So we asked again this year in this year's budget, and again, we were told no. There are also, we need more strategies, and there are strategies that we can take to be able to close the tax gap. You know, if you abscond outside of Connecticut, we don't, we're not allowed to hire lawyers and go after you if you're living in Massachusetts, if you didn't pay us. If we do, if we wanted to go after you, we have to go to the AG's office, and obviously, they're very tight on staff. This, that issue doesn't raise to the top of all the things that they've got to deal with, so it's a problem for us. So we've asked every year to allow us to go out and hire our own lawyers to go after these folks that don't pay our taxes. Some other internal things that we could do? You know, in California, New York, and Massachusetts, if you go get your license renewed, they do a tax check on you to make sure that you paid all your state taxes, just like we do with the property tax. We've asked for that ability as well. We think we can bring in about 300 million a year just on the license renewal initiative alone. Yet, the legislature feels that it's not politically viable, and we get rejected on those kinds of things. And so I think the lesson coming out of that is if you want to close the tax gap, John and I can make a big dent on it. We're gonna need more staff, and you're gonna have to turn us loose. You know, it's funny, because when I go to the Finance Committee and I look at the Finance Committee when John and I are testifying, just about every person on that committee has called me at one point or another in the last four years and asked me to intercede in a collection effort on one of their constituents. You know, give them a break. Can you put in payments? Meanwhile, we've had the person on like eight payment plans. They never honored one to begin with, so why would we do a ninth? And it makes me chuckle. So there's pain there for those folks, but it's really the right thing to do. I don't like to have to call people on that. John will tell you, I actually do it myself. I get on with some probably your clients, and I'll tell them that, you know, you owe us this money, or I'll look up the file. I don't like to have to do it, but it's part of the job, and if we all do it and do it well, you know, it's less taxes for everybody. So it's an interesting study. Take a look at it. I wouldn't jump to any conclusions about it. And I don't know if the folks that really wanted this study in the legislature are gonna like some of our answers, but that's the way it is. The second thing I just want to mention to you before I pitch it over to John, who's got a bunch of other items that he wants to go through with you, is what is the federal, what is the federal atmosphere gonna be now for tax policy? And I have met back in early December with the Beachhead Team for the Trump Administration. It was really about infrastructure, but we spent a few minutes talking about tax policy. I could tell you, there's a pretty strong movement to raise the SALT cap up significantly. The President has indicated his willingness and favorability to do that, which I think would help us here in Connecticut. In addition to that, there are some tax credits that are related to the green economy that I think are gonna be wiped out. They have to do a reauthorization in April, and I think you're gonna see a lot of tax changes in that reauthorization, so stay tuned. But it certainly is a time of uncertainty, not for this year, but for next year. We'll try to the extent that, you know, they're not, it's not us passing these laws or changing the policy, but we recognize that we serve as a conduit to you all, so we'll try to keep you updated and do some updates through our RAF unit to reach out to you and let you know what some of these changes are and how we're interpreting them. But it's definitely, in some ways, exciting. In some ways, it's, makes everybody a little bit nervous. So we'll have to see how all that goes down. But I can definitely say that there was almost, the team that I talked to, unanimity relating to the cap on SALT. So that'll be interesting to see how that all plays out. So with that, I'm gonna pitch it over to John a little bit to talk about some of the more detailed things that are happening within DRS as far as changes. There's not major stuff going on. And internally, we're hiring freeze right now. We need to hire more people. We recognize that. But we've been frozen for the last two months, I think, anyway. So we, every day, we're tweaking OPM about the same, re-essup. You know, it's because of the runway. John will tell you, it's, you know, it's about 18 months by the time we get somebody who enters into the agency, really does all the training, understands what our mission is, and then we can, with confidence, put them out in the field and let them do that. Some people learn quicker, don't get me wrong, but all of us, you know, that runway is long, and that's why we always have to keep having people in the hopper in terms of hiring, because we do, we've had a large retirement wave. We've just lost some good people that have decided to go spend time on the beach with a margarita. We're happy for them, but it definitely needs more work for John and Lou and I. So with that, John?
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Bonnie, for that very nice introduction. I appreciate that. And I will say, you've made me a little younger in saying that I started in 92. I actually started in 90, sorry to say. But it's been a long time, but it's been a great, a great, a great time at the department. And we really do strive for public service and great public service, and it's something that all of our senior managers at the agency and still in their staff, that, you know, we don't, we expect a high, a high degree of service that's provided, and we don't accept anything less. So if there's any time that any of you do receive service that's not of a level that you'd expect, certainly let us know, because that's, those are the types of things that we want to hear about. Just, we have a filing season upon us, which is why we're here. Our filing season, our systems open on the 21st, Tuesday, for accepting returns and processing returns. I know that's a little earlier than the IRS. I think the IRS is a week later, but we typically do that. We typically open up a bit early, and we actually do start to get returns, particularly returns that involve an earned income tax credit. Those filers like to get their returns in early, those income tax returns early, so we, they can get their refunds timely. All of the forums, all the 2024 forums are available on the DRS website, forms and instructions. Those are there. We are actively working with all of the software vendors to get all of those products into an electronic format for filing. This year is right on schedule with what we typically see in our interactions with software vendors, so nothing unusual to report to you, nothing out of the ordinary in terms of forums that'll be available through the vendor, through the software vendors. One of the things Commissioner Bowden mentioned a bit ago was the correction that was made to the Pension and Annuities Instructions. There was a correction alert that was issued by the agency earlier this week, and it really is for the instructions to the Connecticut 1040 and the Connecticut 1040 NRPY. There was, this year, the phase-out of the exemption for pension and annuities, as everyone knows, has graduated. We don't have that hard cliff that we had in prior years, and the instructions this year simply left off the calculation schedule. So it was, that was added to the, to the, to the instructions. And we've got an alert on our, on our website. I'll send the link out to Cindy, so she can make sure it's available to everybody, and everybody does see that. For this filing season, we're participating in Free File and Direct File. I know that doesn't directly impact you, but it does impact taxpayers, so we are gonna be offering those services on our website with links to the IRS site where they can, where taxpayers can participate in those filing methods. One of the new things you'll see on the Connecticut 1040 this year is is a checkbox on the Connecticut 1040 for Access Health CT. There was some legislation that was passed in the previous legislative session that requires the Department to exchange information with Access Health CT. And it's really a simple thing. It's just ask the taxpayer if they would like the Department of Revenue Services to provide information to Access Health CT, so they can get information out about healthcare plans that may be available to individuals that don't have an employer-sponsored healthcare program. So that's new this year. We will be exchanging data with Access Health CT for any taxpayer that does, in fact, check that box on the return. Some administrative things for the filing season. We, I'm getting a note that my microphone is emitting a lot of static. I apologize for that. Let me see. I'll try to open it up again. I don't know if that's any better. No? Okay, I see Cindy shaking her head. No. I'm not sure what else I can do. I am not wearing a mic. No, it's the mic from my laptop. And I usually don't have a problem with it. This is the first time I'm experiencing any type of issue with it. I don't know if that's better. Cindy, is that better?
It's about the same. It's only when you have an S sound.
Oh, okay. I'll try and avoid the S's then. All right, I'll continue on.
Anytime he talks, it's scratchy. It's, you know, there's that. When he's silent, there's no noise, but when he starts talking, there's a noise.
All right. This must be the state-issued laptop. I'll have to see if I can get an upgrade.
You can try logging off and logging back on if you want to do that quickly.
That's up to, do you want me to try that, Cindy, or Bonnie?
I, I hate to do that, just because we started five minutes late, and by the time you get off and get back in, that'll be, if, it's not, it doesn't prevent us from understanding what you're saying.
Okay, okay. All right, that's good. I will, I've got a few more things on the tax filing season. Then we'll open it up to questions, and you won't have to hear me as much, so maybe that'll, that'll help. So just to get back to what we were talking about, the, going into the filing season from an administrative perspective, we're staffed up and ready to go in our Taxpayer Services Center. We've got 20-plus, probably around 25, consumer information reps that are ready to handle calls from taxpayers and practitioners like yourself. If last year was any indication of how this year will go, last year, we had very little wait times throughout tax season. It's something we monitored on a continuous basis. And Melissa Pescatelli, our Director of Taxpayer Services, monitors that as well, and we throttle that up or down if we need to. So we're expecting that there would be very little wait times again for this year for anyone that needs to get through. We're also taking, we take questions through email as well, which is, there's a link on our website for where you can submit questions through email. And typically, those questions are answered within 24 hours. Now, don't hold me to that, because there are occasions where we could go beyond that, but typically, we try to get those questions answered within, within a day. One of the things that I always like to mention when we're in front of a group is refunds. We have in Connecticut, and I know I've said this before in the past, and Commissioners have said this when we're out in front of groups, we have a very robust fraud screening for refunds. And one of the things we hear quite a bit is, hey, my refund took a little longer than typical to get, or my refund was flipped from an electronic credit to my bank account to a paper check. Why is that? That's because of fraud screening. If we screen every single refund claim that comes through the Department, we want to make sure, we go to, through, to great lengths to make sure that refunds get in the right hands of taxpayers. So if, if an electronic debit to a bank account is flipped to a check, that means that our system flagged something that was a little out of the ordinary, and we are changing the refund method to a check, because there's no better way to get the refund into the right hands than somebody having to present a paper check, refund check to the bank. So one of the things that you could, I hear that the mic is clear now. That's great. That's, again, that's the state laptop. The mouse must be running a little harder inside this laptop here for me, so, which is good. So I guess what I was, what I was trying to say is, you might want to get out in front of that a bit, let your clients know that if you do see a delay in refunds, it's simply because the state is doing its due diligence to make sure that all the refunds are getting out to those that, those that deserve it, and they are the right, in fact, in fact, the right taxpayer to receive the refund. So that's all, just our fraud screening. One of the things we're doing this year, and we've done it throughout the year, and I hope you've noticed it, is our Taxpayer Service Group is out there quite a bit with our education and outreach. We are doing a series of webinars across the tax filing season this year. We are doing one on the 23rd of January for Earned Income Tax Credit. We're doing one on the 29th for Personal Income Tax, February 26th for Pensions and Annuities, and on March 20th, we're doing another one on Personal Income Tax. These all start at 10 o'clock. They're usually about an hour or so. And you can register by going to the DRS website and just registering for each of the webinars. There's a list of them there. Our Taxpayer Service Group does a great job of getting general information out. This is our effort of enhanced education and outreach for the public. The other thing that you might be interested in, as all of you know, there's been significant changes with flow-through entities and the pass-through entity tax and composite income tax filing. We are doing a series of four sessions for the pass-through entity tax and composite filing. Again, 10:00, 10:00 a.m., web-based on January 24th, February 7th, February 21st, and March 7th, all dedicated to the pass-through entity tax and composite income tax return. Crystal Hale, who's the manager of our audit section that handles these returns, is heading that up, along with Mike Romeo, who's also a manager in our audit division as well. And one of the things that we've done this year, we anticipated a higher, higher number of questions when it comes to pass-through entities in the composite and PET filing this year. So we've, we've added a web messaging capability in MyConnect for anyone that might have questions on a return of the pass-through entity return or the composite return or a process, whatever it may be, that's related to PET. If you, all the taxpayer really needs to do, all the practitioner really needs to do is log into MyConnect, and there will be a, you'll see a link under the More tab where the, you can just enter, send a message to the Department, and you can enter your question there really quick, really easy. It's gonna go right to Crystal Hale, to be quite honest with you, and her group, and they'll be able to answer any questions that you might have there. So hopefully, you find that helpful, trying to get out in front of any questions that there might be regarding the pass-through entity tax and the composite return.
Speaking of that, we do have a few PET questions here. The first one is, is this the right time? Are you gonna cover it more, and I should wait till a little bit later?
No, you could absolutely ask away, absolutely.
Okay. Regarding the pass-through entity tax, can non-resident partners or shareholders participate in a CTPET, a Connecticut PET election? Or is the pass-through entity forced to pay taxes in for these non-residents on the composite income tax return, and how does that work?
Okay, so.
I'm gonna copy and send it to you, too.
Yes. I would, that would, that's what I was just gonna suggest, Bonnie. If you could send me the technical questions like that. It's difficult to answer something like that in a forum like this, but what I'm gonna say is, is off the top of my head, yes, those non-residents can certainly participate if that entity is doing business in Connecticut, and they, they, well, let me, let me just step back a little bit. We've got two things here. We've got the pass-through entity tax, right? Which we all know what the purpose of that is. They can certainly participate in that, make the election. If there's non-resident members, you can, you can certainly participate in that. On the composite side, if there's non-resident members, that's the purpose of the composite return. The composite return is filed on behalf of those non-resident members, and the tax is paid on their behalf through the composite income tax return. So I hope I'm answering the question at a high level, but send that to me, and if you have the contact of the person that's asking the question, we'll certainly get that out to them in more detail.
And we have another one in that area as, as well. And this time, it's regarding estimated tax payments for new PET tax. If a pass-through entity pays an estimated on CT 1065 by mistake, instead of the new Connecticut pass-through entity tax estimate by mistake, how can they get it reapplied to the correct type of estimated tax? Again, I'm sending that your way right now, John.
Okay. It sounds like this, this was the issue way back in, was it 2016 or 17? Where the Department went through and re-characterized payments. I think that's what the question gets at. There'll be, there will be, there'll be a way to do that. Again, I don't have the details of the return right in front of me, so I can't give details on it. So let me, let me see the question, and we'll research it and get to you. And I will say, these are the types of things that, that we, we want, because we are going to accumulate the questions and put them in a format of a Q and A for practitioners and taxpayers to view on our website and get the answers to anything they need. So we are formulating that right now. So these are great. These are good questions.
Thank you.
Was that it? I'm sorry, Bonnie, you're on mute.
I thought you could read my mind. Yes, we are done with questions for right now. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. All right. The last thing that I wanted to mention to all of you was the 2024 legislative developments. So if you look at the, if you go to the DRS website, right on the homepage, there's a, there's a link for 2024 Connecticut State Tax Developments. That'll give you all of the items that are applicable for this coming tax season. It starts out with Corporation Business Tax. It starts out with corporation business tax. One of the big things there was the extended period of time to claim not operating losses, any net operating losses that are realized on January 1, 2025 or later. There's now a 30-year period to claim those net operating losses rather than the previous 20 years. It's important to note that any net operating losses that occurred prior to January 1 of 25 still has the 20-year carryforward provision in play. There's some information about business tax credits, and one of the things, believe it or not, that has gotten a tremendous amount of interest is the student loan, the credit for student loan payments. We get asked about this all the time. But unfortunately, there's not a lot of employers that are taking advantage of this. So it might be a good thing to spread the word on this. There's, the credit has been in place for a few years. However, the legislature expanded the type of loan that could be available or eligible for this credit. In the past, it was limited to loans that were serviced by CHESLA, Connecticut Higher Education Supplemental Loan Authority. The General Assembly expanded that and opened it up to student loans that may be serviced by other organizations as well. So that's a good thing for employers to take advantage of if they do, in fact, offer any type of student loan payments for their employees. For income tax, one of the big provisions was regarding withholding and withholding on pensions and annuity distributions. Those of you that have been doing this for a little bit of time know how this has kind of bounced around a little bit. There was withholding at the very start on pensions and annuities was voluntary. Then it went to a mandatory regime for a period of time. We're back to that voluntary, however, a thing to be aware of is that the payer is still required to withhold on lump sum distributions. And there are some thresholds there. If the lump sum distribution is $5,000 or 50% of the total balance of the account, then there's withholding required. So something new to be aware of for pension and annuities and for pension and annuity distributions and the withholding requirements on those types of payments. Those were the big provisions that were out of the 2024 session. Again, not a lot. We're expecting more this session, obviously. But nothing in the way of sales tax. It was really one minor sales tax exemption for the Capital Region Development Authority, very, very specific and limited scope there. So that's really about it for for any provisions that affect the 2024 filing year. Commissioner, I don't know if you had anything else?
No, I think we had it all covered pretty good.
We have a couple more questions for you. I forwarded them to you, John. Can you see them? Did they come through?
How are you forwarding them to me?
That's a good question. I don't know how they forwarded to you. I just go into the chat. You know what? They come through chat, I think.
I got it. Okay, let's see here. Yep, I can see. So pass-through entity tab. Can non-resident partner, I think we looked at that one already, right? Estimated payments we looked at. Yep, regarding allocating the joint refund, that one?
Yes, please.
Okay, regarding allocating the joint refund on an original joint return filed but electing married filing separate on an amended return, how can we notify the DRS to allocate on their Connecticut tax accounts the joint refund shown on the original return to what is declared as refund received on the married filing separate return? Holy cow. So to avoid all the refund applied to the primary account. Okay, I think I kind of understand the gist of it. We've got an amended return being filed to change the filing status. And there's still a refund that's pending based on the original return. So whenever I see something like this, it's always advisable to call us. Just call us. We'll work through it. Phil Soucy in our operations bureau has a great staff that handles these types of things all the time. And we'll work through it and get the refund to who needs to get the refund. So just give us a call and we'll work through an issue like that. That's the easiest answer that I would have for something like that. I'd like a clarification on the PET tax for non-residents. Is this correct? A non-resident can elect to be included in the PET pass-through entity tax as in the past or be included on the composite return? So there's two, like I said, there's two things here. The entity elects to pay, to participate in the pass-through entity tax, right? There's an election that's made for the entity to pay the pass-through entity tax. Regardless of whether there's residents, non-residents, the entity, if the entity elects to pay the pass-through entity tax, they pay the pass-through entity tax. The composite return is, if you think of it the way I think of it, it's simply an income tax return that's being filed on behalf of all the non-residents of that entity, of that pass-through entity. It's just an income tax return. So if you were to fill out a separate 1040 NRPY for all the non-residents, you don't have to do that. Just take care of it all on the composite return and the income tax is paid on their behalf through the composite filing. If the withholding for pensions and annuities is now voluntary, do individuals need to file a new CTW4P with the payer to stop or change the withholding? The answer is yes. It would be advisable to file a new CTW4P with the payer with the, you know, with the appropriate information, the filing status and that type of thing. So yes, that definitely issue that to the payer. And let's see, where can you register to receive DRS updates? Right on our website. You should be able to register. If you're looking to register for the webinars, you can do that there. There's also, I believe we still do the e-alerts through our taxpayer service center. So and there's a way to register for those e-alerts as well on our, right on our taxpayer, right on our website. You can get those updates. And what I'll do is I'll give Bonnie the link for those things so you can, you know, you guys can distribute them to your members.
Sure. They're also asking for the telephone number?
The telephone number. Okay, that's on our website as well. Let me get that for you because I don't have that right on it. I have our website up. Let me just.
I was going to say, when we send out the information to everyone, we can include the telephone number in.
That will get you to our contact center. There's also an 800 number. It's 382-9463.
There's also the dedicated hotline for MyConnect too, John. That's 877-729-66. Oh crap, I think it's 99.
That'll get you into our e-service.
6691, 6691. That's the dedicated MyConnect line. In case you haven't traveled.
We were just asked for the, if we would provide the links for the webinars that John mentioned. And yes, we'll work with DRS as he said to get that information, and we will share it with everyone after this town hall.
Yep, and I think there was one, there's one question on 1099s. Looks like our 1099 and payroll software company has not updated CT 1096. If we file electronically for federal, does Connecticut take federal filing or do they look at the CT 1096? We want the CT 1096 with the filing. So not sure why your software company hasn't updated that, but we do look for that CT 1096, yes.
Being asked for the individual's telephone number regarding the joint refund MFS. I'll circle back to you after this meeting to get that, John, and we can follow up with him.
Yeah, we'll follow up directly. Absolutely.
All right, great. I'm going to open, do you have additional comments you'd like to make now, or would you like to open it up for Q and A? We only have, we have about 10 minutes for it because I know that our meeting ends at 10 o'clock, but you also have a hard stop at 10.
Yep, no, I've covered everything I think that I wanted to. So if there's any questions, more questions, certainly happy to take them.
For those of you who would like to ask a question, now that the commissioner and deputy commissioner are done with their presentations, feel free to unmute yourself and ask your question. As far as attendance checks, we will circle back to you. If you had a problem, they're all noted here in the chat. I'm not going to respond to them individually now, but we will deal with that after the town hall. Does anybody else have any questions now?
I have a question.
Mark, go ahead.
Mark Winnick here. John, can you tell me about the pass-through entity tax? It looks like the new form does not include a line for the NOL carryover from the prior year. Is that a oversight, or was that something deliberate that was determined to be not?
Are you, you're saying on the pass-through, the pass-through entity return?
Yes. So in prior year forms, if a company had a loss, that loss carried forward to the next year's pass-through entity tax return.
Okay.
I don't see that on the current.
This is Tony. Yeah, the rules are no longer carryforwardable for the legislation that was passed.
Right, right. I was going to say, no longer applies, but again, I don't have the form in front of me, so I would certainly have to take a look at it. But that's, I think, is really the heart of the matter, is that it just doesn't apply at this point.
Right.
I have a question. This is Dan Valaro.
Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, regarding sales tax filing frequency. If there's an annual filer who had a one-time event where they had a large use tax to pay, and they did it, okay, in the prior year, and the department has now moved them to be a monthly filer instead of an annual filer, but they're a manufacturer, so they never collect any sales tax. Can they request to be put back to annual? Because they're not going to have any sales tax collected in the 12 months.
Yeah, typically, you know, it's all based on, it's all based on the amount that is paid. I think it's like, if it's, I think it's $1,000, you're an annual filer. Anything over $4,000, you're a monthly filer. So you'd have to contact us, you know, when you, there's typically a letter that goes out whenever a change is made.
Yep, we got it.
Their filing status. So on that letter, I'm sure there's a number to call. You can certainly call, explain, explain just what you said to us. And I'm sure that it would be, it could be switched back to an annual filing.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm being asked to provide the link to the study you mentioned. You were talking about the tax incident report earlier, but you said, did you say you're working on another one now, or you're about to issue another one?
Yeah, we issued it yesterday to the, we had a press release that went out about it. I believe it's on the website. I just want to make sure that they put it up because they, we issued the press release in the afternoon, and they said they would have it up right away. But I didn't go back and check to see if it was up. I just assumed it was.
We'll make sure everyone gets that link. So thank you for filling me in on that. Thank you.
Sure.
We have another question here. Does the IRIS filing for 1099s take care of the Connecticut filing when you check the combined federal-state filing?
If I understand it right, does the IRS filing of the 1099s?
You know, maybe that, it says IRIS, but maybe an extra I was added there. So if you don't have an IRS filing, I'm going to say it's the IRS one, IRS.
I don't believe it does. We require a separate submission of those documents. So I would say no. But again, I'll confirm all this for you.
And what I'll do afterwards is I'll copy all of these questions, and I'll send them to you in email so you don't have to remember everything.
Great.
Lord knows I wouldn't. All right. I believe, I believe that is all the questions we have. If you have a question that you sent me and I did not see it, or you have a new, an additional question, feel free to unmute yourself and ask that at this time.
If there's nobody else, this is Dan Valaro again. I asked a question earlier about the taxpayer who pays pet taxes in on the wrong form. And the reason I'm asking it is because for, since the beginning of the pet tax, whatever, four or five years ago, my clients and taxpayers have been used to paying in under Connecticut 1065, 1120S estimated form. But now there's a new, there's a new estimated form called Connecticut Pet ES. And most of my clients are going to make the pet election and have to pay the tax under the new Connecticut Pet ES form. I'm not sure what that looks like on MyConnect yet. But I'm anticipating a lot of my clients are probably going to make a mistake and pay it under the composite form, which they've been doing for the last six years. And, you know, I just, this is probably for Crystal Hale's team. But, you know, if they do make a mistake, is there going to be a way for us to call or whatever to get the taxes reapplied to the new pet estimated?
Yes, you could always call us with any question. And like I said, we have staff that handle those types of of issues, but I guess, I guess by, what I would just ask you the question back is, there are no estimated tax requirements, estimated payment requirements for the composite return. So there are no forms, there's no capability in MyConnect to do that. So I'm not sure how they would, unless they used an older paper form and sent it to us. I'm not sure how they would, how they would make that mistake, I guess.
So if you have a taxpayer, a pass-through entity who's not going to elect pet, they would have to pay in for non-resident partners, they would have to pay the composite tax in. And I believe they have to pay quarterly through estimated taxes. And from what I can see of the forms out on your website, the way to pay that would be Connecticut 1065, 1120S. ES, you know, it would be done on MyConnect, of course, because it's required to be done electronically. Now, that composite payment is the old pet tax payment that we've done for the last six years, that bubble, Connecticut 1065, 1120SI. Now, there's a new estimated tax form or bubble on MyConnect, CT Pet ES, brand new. Which most of our clients and taxpayers are going to want to do because they're going to make the pet election. So I'm anticipating confusion when my clients go to pay their estimated taxes. Again, I'm not sure what it looks like on MyConnect yet. But, does that, do you understand what I'm saying?
But yeah, John, there is no, there is no estimated tax payment requirements for the composite tax.
Really?
Right.
Yeah, there isn't. So there shouldn't be a 2024 that's a CT 1065 or whatever form for 2024.
So there's no estimated.
Okay, if you're talking about a resident individual that's making estimates, you know, the.
I'm talking about going forward, talking about going forward in 2025 and 2026, not 24.
There's no, there's no estimates for the composite return. So that's just, right, that's just paid at the, with the filing of the actual tax return itself.
Oh, okay. All right, then I guess that, if there's no estimated requirement for the composite, it's just paid at the end, end of the year?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
All right, so, but again, whenever, if there's ever confusion about application of a payment, just in general, you could call us. We have staff that, like I said, we have staff that handle those issues all the time. But I don't anticipate, you know, I don't anticipate a large number of issues with estimates for the pass-through entity tax. Because like, I think Tony was the, you know, Tony chimed in there. There is no composite.
Uh-oh.
He's frozen. He'll come back.
Positive return estimated tax requirement. I'm sorry, I think it froze up a bit. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
We can hear you now. You're good.
We got you.
Okay, got you.
Thank you for that. I was just going to say, we finish up at 10 o'clock, and I have one question from our not-for-profit committee. And it's regarding the Form 990T. There's a problem with MyConnect where. Um, there's, there's a problem with My Connect where it doesn't link to common filing programs that are used by CPAs. And so we're, we're wondering um who we should work with at DRS to address that um that problem with My Connect? And then the second thing would be, because right now the individual um clients are having to enter all that data manually themselves into My Connect. Um, and that's problematic. Would there be a possibility of um allowing paper filings on that until the My Connect issue is uh is addressed?
Yeah, Bonnie, I saw your email from the uh earlier this morning on on this. And I'm gonna talk with Phil on it. I'm gonna get with Phil. Um, nothing's changed with My Connect, so I'm not sure why this would be an issue. And and one of the things that, you know, I wonder about is are the software vendors picking up the form? Because they they need to pick up the forms and make them available. Like, we had this issue with the the ten forty X, you know, several years ago where we made it available and it was out there for the software vendors. Some picked it up, some didn't. Matter of fact, I think there's still a few that haven't picked it up and we're now six, seven years out um from when it became available electronically. So I'm wondering if that's what the issue is, but I'm gonna get with Phil and and we'll have that that um, that question answered. We'll get to the bottom of it.
Perfect. Well, it is nine fifty-eight, so if we ask another question, I would not meet the stop at ten o'clock. And I do know that you guys do have a hard stop. So I'm gonna say thank you very much for joining us today. We always appreciate the opportunity to hear from you and ask questions. I will follow up um John and send you all that information that we were asked here in the chat and get the links and numbers from you. And we will send it back out to all of you that are participating in today's program. We'll get you all the links, all the telephone numbers, everything that you need. So thank you very much and everyone have a great day.
Thanks, everyone.